It is four o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Mayor Sue Patterson.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Warren Dickert.
Present.
Councillor Harold Fleet.
Present.
Councillor Dave Hawking.
Present.
Councillor Carol Hudson.
Present.
Councillor Brandon Cable.
Present.
Councillor Susan Sackel.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present and accounted for. The land acknowledgement, as we work toward reconciliation with indigenous people, we begin our meeting today by respectfully acknowledging that we are situated on the traditional territory of the Anishinaabe Nation, the people of three fires known as Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi nations, and further give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nauwah, now known as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, as the traditional keepers of this land. So, welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. Good afternoon, council, staff, guests, the viewing public, and the media. Council, does anyone have a disclosure of pecuniary interest? If one should arise during the meeting, you may declare it then. We'll move on with our agenda. Item four is agenda additions or deletions, and we do not have any. Item five is our health and safety message brought to us by Deputy Mayor Dickert.
I'm going to try and do this with my scratchy voice. Flooding is typically caused by melting snow, ice jams, and heavy rain. It can happen at any time of year in urban and rural areas. Flash flooding can occur in significant rainstorms, often with little or no warning. Important documents should be stored in a safe place. If you need to make an insurance claim or request disaster relief, you will likely need documents such as your insurance policies, deeds, or mortgages. Prepare your basement by installing check valves and sewer drains, testing sump pumps regularly, and applying weather protection sealant around windows and ground level doors. Personal belongings in your basement should be stored in sealed bins. Prepare the exterior of your residence by extending downspouts to move water away from your home, removing debris that could present danger, and securing outdoor furniture. During a flood, take immediate action by monitoring your local news for updates. If emergency officials instruct you to evacuate, do so immediately. If you haven't been asked to evacuate, but your property is being flooded and your electricity is on, leave immediately. After a flood and before returning home, check with your local municipality for any information from local public health units, utilities, and other community officials. The Ministry of Natural Resources and Forestry's Surface Water Monitoring Centre provides current flood and drought information, which is shared with ministry offices and conservation authorities for communication to the public. You can also visit the Ontario Surface Water Monitoring Centre website to learn more. Be prepared for any emergency and create your 72-hour emergency preparedness plan and kit. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and it had to be a longer one this time. Item six, delegations. We do not have any. Item seven, business arising from the minutes. Again, we do not have any, so we'll move on to item eight, which is staff reports. Eight point one is report PB 0824. The subject is civic facilities make-up air unit replacement. It's from Andrew Wilken, our Director of Building and Planning and CBO, and I need a mover and seconder before Andrew highlights his report. Councillor Hudson and Councillor Sackel. Andrew?
Thank you, Your Worship. In early 2024, some issues began to arise with the existing make-up air unit on the roof of the civic building here, located in the mechanical penthouse on the roof. Initial investigation that we conducted, we hoped that there would be some parts replacement and some ongoing maintenance that potentially could get us a few more years of service of the existing unit. However, through that investigation and discussing with a few mechanical trades separately, it was determined that we were not going to be able to remedy the current situation and that a unit replacement was the direction we should be going. The complexity of the project was discussed with the trades as well as in the request for proposal. This project will require the roof to be removed off the existing mechanical penthouse unit and some craning to be done out of the civic parking lot, so some closures will be required and some safety requirements. On March the 5th, 2024, the RFP for the make-up air unit replacement was released. We advertised it on the town website and on bid and go. Two complete tenders were received prior to the closing date. We also did receive one incomplete tender, which we do not open if it is incomplete. The tender results are, as you see here. Based on the complexity of the project, we think it would be wise to include about a $10,000 contingency allowance, while the removals and the reinstatements are all within the scope. It's not just a very simple in and out of the unit, which technically it is, but there could be some unexpected costs that arise because of the complexity. The financial implications is that the make-up air unit replacement is an unbudgeted item. Based on the age of the facilities that we do have, we're going to start to see kind of a sunset timeline on a lot of the units we do have on our facilities. Originally, we thought this unit replacement could be up to $250,000, so we were happy to see the bids come in quite a bit less than that. But we should expect to see some replacements of many of our units. I'm anticipating over the course of the next five years or so. We're currently working behind the scenes to understand what remaining lifespans we do have with our units to try to better understand what those timelines would be. Because it's unbudgeted, it is proposed that the funds required for this project would be allocated from the TCA Reserve Fund, 50% of it, and 50% from general reserves, approximately $88,400 from each. The link to the strategic plan is safe and reliable infrastructure, and the recommendation is that report PB 8-24 civic facilities make-up area unit replacement be received, that the project be awarded to Montgomery Industrial Services for the total cost of $163,789 plus HST, that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to enter into a contract with Montgomery Industrial Services for the completion of this work, and that council approve funding this project as detailed in report PB 8-24. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Andrew. Comments or questions? Councillor Cable.
Well, thank you, Worship. Later on in the council agenda, we have an item around the Second Street Road reconstruction, which came in under budget. Is a portion of that going to be able to go back into some of these accounts, or is that all the water and wastewater portion?
Chris, can you answer that?
I think Ron will address that, but that particular one is all from OSIF funding as well as CCBF funding as well as water reserves, so it's not like it's tax dollar money going back into it. So we'll want to definitely have this project for how it has been looked at for reserves and reserve funds, 50/50, and then any money left over from Ron's, as he will discuss. We have other projects still coming up, so you don't want to say, yes, let's earmark that $50,000 towards this project when the other project that we're going out could be higher, so you don't want to say what you're going to do. Normally, it goes back into the reserves if it does need to be used.
Ron, did you want to comment, or you'll wait?
Yeah, just further what Chris was saying is they were the funding for the Second Street project was coming from grants, and they were specifically related to this type of work. There was waterworks portion that was coming out of waterworks reserves, but a large portion was coming for grants, and that was earmarked for road reconstruction projects.
Thank you. Councillor Cable, anything further?
Thank you, Worship. I do assume that somewhere along the line, though, that that money will be found, right? Because the OSIF money will roll to another project, and somewhere along the line, we will find that that money. Just wondering, I know we had allocated about $67,000 for flooring and paint in this building for this year, and I think the paint maybe has got underway. What's the status with the flooring at this point?
So, Andrew?
Yeah, through your worship, in the early stages of the facility, so if Chris could jump in as to the planned projects for 2024, it would help.
That is coming from a different reserve. There's the general reserves, and then part of that full general reserve is about 1.4 million. But of the actual general reserves, it has no earmarked anywhere that we normally just put there for these one-offs that may happen unbudgeted. It's about 135,000 sitting in there, so we're taking half of that to pay for this make-up unit. But for the $67,000, it's coming from the actual Civic Centre Reserve Fund. But right now, because our our maintenance coordinator is retiring at the end of April, we have a new one onboard, so it'll be something that would be one of his first major projects to happen. I don't see that happening until the fall, if at all. And the painting that you're talking about was in the municipal office, and that was to be done last year. So that was coming from reserves from last year that didn't get done. So the $67,000 that's earmarked for downstairs in the lobby area for the floor in the painting has not even started yet. I would think fall, possibly, if it does go ahead.
So it would be possible to delay that project to 2025 and use those funds to support this more pressing need?
Again, all the monies are in the reserves. They're sitting there anyways, so whether you use it this year or next year, it does not matter at this point.
I just think that it's, as it says in the report here, it's vital and important in continuing to maintain our reserves and reserve funds. So I do think that it's, you know, kind of a balancing act, and perhaps it's something that we could look at, you know, is that project really necessary this year? And if not, it's something that we could fund from capital for next year.
Through you, Worship, every year we've waited, you're talking another $8,000 to $10,000 every year. It started off, you know, around 38, 40,000, went up to 50, now went up to 60, now it's up to 67,000. It continues to go up. So if we don't do it, it's not a major issue down there, but we do have a lot of cracked tiles and a lot of things that are happening that are tripping houses for the public. So that is one thing we want to address as soon as possible, if possible.
Other comments or questions? Councillor Fleet?
Thank you, Worship. Just reading here, based on the age of many town buildings, the lifespan of existing mechanical units are reaching their expiry. How many units would we be talking? Like, how many buildings or units would?
Through your worship, like, we could be talking maybe 15 units as a whole, something along those lines. They're not, they're not all make-up air. They're not all the same costs, so our rooftop units through the medical clinic, items like that. So when I, when I previously stated that it maybe makes sense to find out what those life, remaining lifespans are and the state of some of those, it might be a good idea to paint a picture as to kind of where we sit and what we can expect. But, you know, if a facility at this point has reached 20, 25, 27 years, and the units are existing, you're not going to get much more time out of those units.
So like the, say, the medical clinic, our P&amp;H Centre, we have no idea how old any of those units are going for, like, was, were the units just replaced at the medical clinic? Has the P&amp;H been updated? Like, and we have our facility down here. I'm just wondering what that all includes.
Through your worship, yeah, I wasn't specifically speaking about the P&amp;H Centre, but I mean, there's, there's been unit replacements in various facilities over time. They're not all 25 years old or 27 years old. There's a mix. The medical clinic itself, though, has a large number of their rooftop units that are existing that have not been replaced, that there could be multiple ones at the same, same time to be replaced. Yeah, you know, a rooftop unit maybe is only $30,000 as opposed to 160,000. But, so trying to understand, you know, what those units are and, and when they need to be replaced, you know, hopefully it's not 13 at one time.
Thank you.
Chris, you want to add to that? And then I'll go to Deputy Mayor Dickert.
Further to what Andrew has said, there are actual 13 rooftop units at the medical clinic, original from 2002. If we are to replace them, do you do them all at once, or do we have to do the whole roof as well? Because the roof itself would now be 25 years old by that time when you're ready to replace those. We have, as part of that $1.4 million, about 580,000 of that is earmarked for the medical clinic because we are aware of that, because we've been putting monies aside. Once the loan was repaid, we made sure that we continued to do that. There are two on the ambulance centre area. One is brand new from 2014, so that's a newer unit. And then the ones here, we just put two new rooftops on here. We have a generator. What do we have? A boiler, a boiler in here that's, was looked at, and everybody says it's doing fine. It's doing great. We updated the chiller, so that was done recently in 2017, I think it was. So we have a lot of stuff that we're looking at, but as Andrew says, with the new maintenance coordinator, we're going to take a look at everything that's mechanical-wise because we are coming up on that 25-year phase. But we have been putting monies aside. But again, if you take those monies aside for other purposes, then it negates what we've been putting aside for that.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. Different topic. The safety precautions that you mentioned, like craning the unit in, and I'm assuming is what your, does it require office closure, or will it have to be done after hours type of thing, or what were you talking about specifically there?
Through your worship, no, I, more so maybe just parking or parking area shutdown, entrance only through the west side for a certain portion of time, something along those lines, and probably for a two-hour span or a three-hour span.
Andrew, did you mention the lifespan of this new one? No?
Through your worship, I'm hoping we get 30 years out of it. I hope not to have to provide the next report on it.
Okay. We'll hold you to it. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, all in favor of report PB zero, councillor Cable?
I think, Worship. I would like to propose that we delay the flooring and paint for the municipal building for the time being, and then revisit that as other tenders come in later this year.
So is that an amendment to this report?
Yes. Well, I would put it out as an amendment, and then it can be voted on, and then we can go back to the original.
Yes.
Use your microphone. Sorry, this report doesn't speak to that at all. That would probably be a notice of motion for the next meeting.
So then would this item have to be delayed, since it directly impacts this item?
Correct.
And delayed is what?
The meeting, our next meeting is April 15th.
But is it a motion to defer?
I'd have to think about that for a minute.
That will take councillor Hawking.
In my previous life, when we have repairs to do, we would do them because it sends a message to the public, and I'm totally against deferring, deferring, deferring. When, how many times have we deferred this, the painting? How many years?
Since 2019.
2019. And originally, it was going to cost?
Around the $35,000.
$35,000. Next year, it's going to be more. Soon, you're going to have a $200,000 bill to do something that we could have done four years ago. So I'm just telling you right now, I'm going to vote against any motion that defers a recommendation to make our buildings look top-notch to the public.
So if, Andrew, go ahead.
Sorry, through your worship, and just councillor, the, just to be clear, the unit is down. Like, the unit is not pulling any fresh air in right now, and it's something that should be addressed. I real, I understand the other ramifications as part of it, but just to be clear, the unit is not functioning, and it has not functioned for about six weeks. So it is important, when possible, to, to at least get it on order, which will be, I would say, probably three or four monthly time as well.
Daniel?
Thank you, through you, your worship. With this, the motion would need to be deferred. And then a notice of motion brought forward at the next meeting because you want to take that $67,000 and put it towards this. Unless we have a new motion that indicates that we take it from currently where we're talking about taking it from, and then have a notice of motion at the next meeting to bring forward that amended motion.
So how about this? What I'm thinking is if we have a mover and seconder to defer it, we'll vote on it. If it passes, then we will be delayed. If it fails, we will vote on the original report. Is that proper? So councillor Sackel?
So if we delay it, that means the whole project is going to be delayed and backed up? Okay, I don't want to see that.
So councillor Cable, do you want to put a motion on the floor to defer this report?
No, I do not wish to defer the report.
So I am calling the question all in favor of PB 0824. That is carried. Thank you. So if you wish to bring a notice of motion at the next meeting or set on our agenda to, right, that you can bring one forward, you are more than welcome. Item 8.2 is report ED 0424. The subject is the Town of Hanover and Launchpad Memorandum of Understanding. It's from April Marshall, our Economic Development Manager, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. And I'll take councillor Cable and councillor Hawking. April?
Thank you, Worship. So the Memorandum of Understanding that you have before you this evening is in response to the November 6, 2023 council meeting, where council approved staff's recommendation to prepare the memorandum or MOU, Memorandum of Understanding between the Town and Launchpad Skills Training and Technology Centre so that we can clearly identify the roles and responsibilities to ensure alignment and accountability amongst the two parties. So as per report ED 0923, we want to, further defining that relationship moving forward, to offer accountability for the town's funds that we, that are being invested in Launchpad. So this MOU or this document will serve involving both parties in recognizing what our shared goals and desired outcomes are and have it be in alignment with both of our strategic priorities. So again, by establishing the MOU, we're taking pride in our efforts to help facilitate and contribute to this regional training and innovation network that coordinates resources and creates a custom and direct pipeline to employment while investing in the retention of our young people to attract families to our community. So the discussion being what is included in the MOU. So again, we're acknowledging the relationship between the Town and Launchpad, and we're including the departments that are affected or that provide services, and that includes human resources, health and safety, finance, and economic development support. This also ensures compliance requirements are met, and those reporting mechanisms, as mentioned, to have accountability towards the funds that are being being extended to Launchpad. So I would like to note that the noted departments were included in the development of this MOU to ensure that the content is reflected and supports what is being offered. And I would go as far as to say to, for example, like joint health and safety recommendations, those are a requirement due to the affiliation that Launchpad has with the Town, and the Town is being accountable for ensuring that those health and safety regulations are met. So I just want to give that as an example that, you know, there was a lot of contribution to this MOU to ensure that everything is outlined accordingly. So it is being proposed that it is a five-year term that would come into effect on May 1st of 2024 and shall continue through the 30th day of April in 2029. So there are no direct financial implications associated with the report, apart from the in-kind contributions noted throughout the MOU, and this does not affect the annual contribution amount in any way. It's clearly identified in here that that is still looked at on an annual basis. The link to the strategic plan is around healthy and welcoming community, strong and vibrant economy, and open and responsible government. And the recommendation is that report ED 0424, Town of Hanover and Launchpad Memorandum of Understanding be received, and that council authorize the mayor and deputy clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Launchpad Skills Training and Technology Centre board that recognizes its roles and responsibilities to ensure alignment and accountability amongst the participating parties. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, April. Are there any questions, comments? Councillor Hudson?
Thank you, Worship. April, you mentioned that it's a five-year contract, this MOU. So on page 12 of the package, on number five, oh, pardon me. Sorry, number 10. So either party, it says either party can terminate the MOU providing the other party with no less than three months. So if, for example, after two and a half years, things just aren't working out, it is, we are able to terminate the five-year contract. Is that correct?
Through your worship, yes, as, as long as we provide that noted notice of, term of notice, yes.
Thank you.
Other councillor fleet?
Thank you, Worship, and like, I was looking at this five-year term, and I'm just wondering if it should be changed to the end of this council term and then a new term? Because you could have, you know, this council could change in two and a half years, and there could be new council reps on the Launchpad board, and so I'm just wondering if we should change that from five years to the 2026 and then have a new term of reference for the new council? Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. In, there's, when we're talking about the in-kind services that we would be supplying, just the, the language concerns me. You know, we hear that our staff is actually, you know, a capacity for most things and, and being stretched kind of thin. And the language in that says, you know, the board may use an employee town staff, and then under the other one, it says, in addition, the town will provide health and safety assistance to Launchpad. That just seems somewhat onerous on the town to say, you know, it's almost like we're guaranteeing we're going to do this. It's, it's not a if time permits, it's, you know, if they get into a bind on the health and safety issue, the town is now bound to take care of that. The same with the finance side of things. The town is kind of bound to take care of that. And I, you know, in follow-up to councillor Hudson's point, with three months, I guess we could say, no, we're out of this now. We don't want to do that. But it just, to me, it seems onerous that we would use that type of language. I would rather, you know, if there was some kind of disclaimer in there that, you know, if we have the resources and the time available to us, we would be doing that. The other side of that is we talk about doing this in kind, but we never put a price tag on it, and I do think we should have a price tag on it. You know, we supply services to Sogin Mobility, to Sogin Airport, and we charge those nonprofit organizations for that service. So this is actually a, an increase in our, you know, there is a financial impact here, I guess, is what I'm saying. So those are my concerns with the agreement as it stands right now. I will say, I do like page 20, item B, where they include strides for self-sustainability. I thank you for putting that in there so that we, that is at least one of the goals of Launchpad, is to work towards that self-sustainability. But I do have concerns with how restricted or how we're committed to that in-kind service and what the price value of that is. I think, you know, in full disclosure and in clear and transparent operations, we should be putting a price tag on that that people can see.
So I will respond, just to start off with saying that since Launchpad was created, I would always, I would say, like, many of these services have been extended for that time. So we're actually just capturing this on paper now and documenting it. And I think that would be beneficial to future councils or future people that are involved in this so that it clearly identifies what the relationship is. As far as the language, health and safety actually specifically put the word "will" in as an example because of the Launchpad's association with the Town and using our WSIB and CRA number and, you know, paychecks being, like, through, being paid through the Town. Like, the Town is automatically now associated with Launchpad. So we do need to So we do need to ensure that they are complying with our health and safety regulations because it could be our responsibility if they're not. So that's why that will is in those health and safety. And I totally, I I do acknowledge what you're saying about, like, for instance, economic development resources. I understand that should be, you know, as time permits or I've just stepped in more or economic development has stepped in more, just recognizing that more structure needs to be put around the relationship and that we need to align our goals more and ensure that Launchpad is responding to the needs of our workforce and our community. So but I just wanted to just talk about that, the will statement and health and safety, because there isn't really room to change that. As far as I understand, it's been taken to the committee and that that's the wording that they would like. But we can, I can certainly take another look through here and and see about other arrangements. I don't know if Chris wants to comment on finance as well, just because of what we're doing.
Through you, your worship.
Yeah.
Finance, basically, it's it's on our on our books, it's set up as a separate department, just like police and library, and we have to do them all exactly the same way. So we do all the financial APAR payroll, you name it, we do it for them. We just don't apply for all the grants and stuff that's that's through them. But because they use our bank account, they have to follow all our policies and procedures, which is exactly what we told them they had to do if they wanted our services.
And and that's fine if that's the way it has to be, but then there should be a monetary value assigned to it because it is obviously costing the taxpayers dollars to to provide that service. And as I say, for our other nonprofits that we provide that service for, we do assign a value. We actually collect money from it. I know that the the organizations with different words, other municipalities that are running those not-for-profits, but this was, this is set up as a not-for-profit. And I think to be totally transparent and clear, we should be telling our ratepayers what, you know, what's the hundred thousand dollars that we give annually plus this in kind. And there is a value to that in kind, and I think that should be stated.
Okay, councillor Sackel.
Thank you, your worship. I think that's going to be really challenging for Chris to figure out, though, if she has to do that for for Launchpad. She'll have to do that for the library. She'll have to do that for the police board. It would only be fair. I don't know how she's going to manage that.
She has a point there. It's very difficult. I don't charge each department for everything. It's just, this is the administration for the town of Hanover. This is what our services provide to every department regardless of who they are. Because we do not charge the police and we do not charge the library. The only thing they are charged for is their audit purposes because they get charged a portion, whatever audit is.
Deputy Mayor.
You know, we recently just went through this with our landfill committee where, you know, our partner in this operation said, you know, you're charging us this amount of administration fees. You should be able to tell me why, how you can up with that number. So it's, it may be difficult, but it is possible. You know, per for three months, six months, whatever it is, you just keep track of how many hours you're putting against that. And I honestly don't see it being that difficult to figure out how much time you're putting against one of these different functions. It, you know, we we assign dollars to everything else. I can't see us not assigning dollars to that. It's just, to me, it is not, it's not being honest to our ratepayers.
So I'd like to suggest that between Chris and the CAO, try and come up with a plan to come up with a number of what it is costing, even if it's a ballpark number. I don't think it has to be detailed, but an idea of what that expense is. So April.
Just for clarification, you want that captured in the MOU or as part of, as part of how we recognize our contributions to Launchpad?
I think it, I don't know that it needs to be in the MOU unless unless you're trying to put upper and lower caps on it or something like that. But I do think it needs to be recognized when we're doing budget work and things of that nature. So, you know, if we need to, if we're, isn't, I don't know what the right word is here, but if if we're actually using our health and safety people and we have to and we're accountable for it anyway, well, yes, then we're going to have to stand behind that. I understand that. You know, if we've already doing the finance side and it's not adding a lot of extra costs, but there is a value to that service that we're providing. And if is is Launchpad is a standalone committee or a standalone operation, then I think it needs to recognize what those costs are. It's 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 good for their business. It's good for our business.
Councillor Cable.
Well, thank you, your worship, and certainly I think both of those are very reasonable additions to this conversation. I think it would be great for us to know kind of what the what the total contribution is from the town of Hanover. And I do wonder, your worship, if perhaps we should look at the MOU expiring around June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. So maybe that would give them the new council about six months time to get up to speed before that MOU would expire.
Yes, you could, but it, the new council starts, is that they're officially sworn in in December. I would suggest that the end of the year, December thirty first, twenty twenty six, is when the MOU is complete. And then staff will bring another one forward for the new council. Make it clean so that we're not locking in the next council, even for six months, because you're going through budget time. So to the end of the term. It's my thoughts. So. Any other comments or questions? We'll come back to that. So April, I have a couple. I'm glad, in my mind, all these services, resources being used have been happening all along. Now we're just formalizing it with a MOU, which is good. I'm in favor of that. I'm glad you clarified about the monetary contribution because that doesn't mean it's a hundred thousand or ten thousand or one dollar. It's up to the council of the day to make that contribution. My question, can you speak to, so that would be on page twelve, item twelve, about if there's a dispute? You've got two members from council, two members from Launchpad, from the board. What happens if there's a dispute and it's a tie?
Through your worship, the point twelve there, I think what we're trying to say here is that the the committee of two members of of Hanover or town CAO and member of council and then two members of Launchpad Board that are not regularly involved in this MOU would would be tasked with determining the process to resolve that dispute or that issue. So they're not actually solving it themselves. They're looking at it more as like that third-party reference and making the recommendations, whether it be to extend a committee and have more people involved or to get a mediator or third part, another third-party person to look at it. But I don't, they're not tasked with making the decision. They're tasked with making the recommendation for the town council and for the Launchpad Board to make, have the final approval of what the process would be.
Okay. I'm, my thoughts are, we have a large investment here, whether it's money or resources. And normally, typically, when there is a dispute of this size, council would have three members and the organization would have two. But if you're saying it would come back to this council, that's fine. My other question, and you touched on it, speak about the liability. Just, I know you talked about WSIB and CRA, and do you want to speak to it or Sherry?
So through you, your worship. So as has been alluded to by both Chris and and April, that we we already have that liability now. And the Launchpad is, as much as it's a not-for-profit, they are utilizing our CRA, which is Canada Revenue Agency registration number as well as our WSIB registration number. So we've, we we are assuming that liability now in the way that that nature of that relationship is. So this just definitely defines it. And as as April said, specifically around the health and safety part, it's will, they, you know, we will do this and Launchpad will do this so that we can ensure that they are following the processes they need to to mitigate any risk that the town may have.
Thank you. And then my final is, I agree that with the length of the MOU, it should be, we don't normally lock in the next council to agreements. So if the year end, December thirty first, twenty twenty six, would be an easy date to for staff and everyone to work towards so that a new MOU could be developed. The same one may be worked just perfectly or a new one and new council, and they can make that decision. Councillor Fleet.
Thank you, your worship. And with a new council coming in place in twenty twenty six, would we, the new council, there mightn't be two councillors appointed to Launchpad. You know, this was just a special time that we appointed two councillors with the difficulty Launchpad was having. So maybe going forward, there'll be only one councillor up.
True, true. April.
Just to speak to that, I think I just wanted to put some narrative around the MOU too, in the sense that we're hoping that we're putting all these mechanisms mechanisms in place so that they can be more, not rely on the town so much. So so I appreciate what you're saying about putting a value on what we're doing and it's the hopes, though, that as the years progress, that they don't need that higher value, right? That they are able to clearly look at this and see the the areas that they need to start to to be more self-sufficient, right? So I just wanted to put that narrative around it too, because we have been a lot more involved than we ever have, but we saw the need to be. And I think I could speak on behalf of Launchpad Board and staff, like, they're very appreciative of that. And I'm getting them on the right track here so that we can have a, you know, a successful future. So I just wanted to point that out as well, just hoping that everything can kind of, well, I know it's hard in W or it's hard with health and safety and finance, but some of the other areas.
And thank you to everyone, council involved, for the extra work you've been putting in for Launchpad. Councillor Sackel, then councillor Cable.
So I just wanted to agree with everything that you were saying, April, and I know how important it's been to all of us that have been working on Launchpad. And we are pleased with the progress we've made in the last year. So I want to give a special thank you to April Marshall, to Chris Walker and to Melissa Hildendorf for everything that they've done for us since I've been on council. Thank you.
Councillor Cable.
Thank you, your worship. I just kind of note that I think that it is advantageous for council to have two representatives on the board and then the third being April, because currently the town does have half the board seats. So I think that that is a a positive. It really shocks me that for the first seven years, we had one out of eight seats, right? And yet we were making this large contribution. So I do think that we're in a much better setup.
Okay, so what I've seen and heard so far, there's only one change to the MOU, and that would be the length of the contract to December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Deputy Mayor.
And just wondering what will be the steps then for reporting back on the value of the in-kind?
I would assume, I shouldn't assume, it's not a good word. I'm thinking before budget, put it that way, before the next budget. Chris, any comment to that or Sherry? I don't know how how long you'll try and work that out, whether it's quarterly or.
Well, in this MOU, it speaks to Launchpad coming at least twice a year, correct? Have they set a date that they may be coming in the near future? So maybe we'll try and time it with when they provide their next update, that we would also provide that update at that time. Rather than, otherwise, we're bringing like a special, or we could provide an update through, yeah, we'll do it that way. Through whenever Launchpad has their next update, we would do it at that time.
Okay, so with regards to the report and that one change, this is ED zero four twenty four, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Item eight point three is report PW zero seven twenty four. The subject is construction of Second Street East of Eighteenth Avenue. It is from Mr. Cooper, our Director of Public Works, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Councillor Fleet and Deputy Mayor Dickert. Ron.
Thank you, worship. This report's regarding the tender that was put out and acceptance of it for construction of Second Street East of Eighteenth Avenue. This project is is required to provide access to the new fire hall currently being built. The project was included in the twenty twenty four capital budget and approved by council. It involves in the construction of Second Street from Eighteenth Avenue, a hundred and thirty meters easterly. It includes installation of new storm sewer, water main, curb gutter, as well as the sidewalk on the south side of the roadway. The engineering design was completed by Cobite Engineering, Engineering, Inc. in two thousand and twenty-three in conjunction with the site plan for the new fire hall. The tender was advertised in the post and on bid and go. And as of the tender closing date of Thursday, February ninth at two P M., we had nine tenders received. The results are are posted on the report here. The tender was reviewed, results were reviewed by Cobite Engineering, Inc. for completeness and accuracy. They have provided an attached letter which indicates that they're recommending acceptance of the tender from Cedarwell Excavating, Inc. In two thousand and twenty-three, Cedarwell Excavating Limited, now known as Cedarwell Excavating, Inc. completed the reconstruction of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, which is County Road twenty-eight from Fourteenth Street to the Solkeen River Crossing and also included analysis of Fourteenth Street urbanization. Quality of their work and ability to work properly with the residents was favorable. The tender stipulates that the project be completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And construction is scheduled to commence basically immediately. We're looking at getting started the week of April the eighth on the on the project. Financial implications of the project are, is that when we put the budget together, we had an estimate for the construction, including contingency of five hundred and eighty-four thousand. And that also would include an allowance for street lighting, which is seven thousand dollars, which wasn't included in that tender because we're going to be coordinating that that work separately. The tender from Cedarwell Excavating Link is coming in under budget by eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-six thousand, or approximately fifteen point one percent. Out of that, approximately eighty-five thousand, thirty thousand of that of the savings is attributed to the waterworks portion of it, which was coming out of water fees. The remaining roadwork, storm, sidewalk portion of it, you know, is approximately fifty-seven thousand. That's coming out of provincial grants. The link to the strategic plan would be safe and reliable infrastructure. And the recommendation is to report PW oh seven twenty-four, construction of Second Street East of Eighteenth Avenue be received. And that the project be awarded to Cedarwell Excavating, Inc. for a total cost of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars plus HST. And that the mayor and deputy clerk be authorized to enter into a contract with Cedarwell Excavating, Inc. for the construction of Second Street East of Eighteenth Avenue. And I would be happy to answer any questions the council would have of me regarding this report and project.
Thanks, Ron. Councillor Hawking.
Thanks for the report, Ron. I was just, I'm just, this is just a comment that of the seven tenders, they vary in almost two hundred thousand dollars between the low and the high. And then when you look at the chart by Cobine, the engineer's estimate was up at six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, which was interesting that we have, we have a lower than dramatically lower from Cedarwell than that. So it's good. It's just a comment.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I'll call the question all in favor of PW zero seven twenty four. That is carried. Item eight point four is report PW zero eight twenty-four. The subject is the Drinking Water Quality Management System Annual Update. It's from Ron Cooper, our Director of Public Works, and I need a mover and seconder to put this on the floor. Counselor Sackel and Counselor Cable. Ron?
Thank you, worship. While I take you through the next hundred and forty-six pages, we'll, we'll try and get it to the point and to the changes that have happened in the, in the update. But we are providing with detailed information. Just as a background on it, it's a component of our municipal drinking water license, you know, issued through the Minister of Environment, Conservation and Parks, that owners of municipal residential drinking water system develop an operational plan based upon the drinking water quality management standard. It was a standard that was developed. Our first drinking water system, D W Q M S, was fully implemented in February of two thousand and twelve. And we have been providing annual updates on it. And what we do is annual updates by council, we provide public notice. It's through our website indicated on our water and sewer buildings, and we have a hard copy of the document available at our Civic Center. The last time the annual update was done, it was in May twenty twenty-three. So now was the time to provide the documents that we've gone through, the audits that we've gone through, and some changes that have been shown to update for this year, twenty twenty-four. And there is not a lot of changes to the document. We've had it in place since two thousand and twelve, our audits that we have gone through there have shown opportunities for improvement, so we have enacted upon those in the reports that we got and updated the documents as, as required. So we had an external audit that was done in August of twenty twenty-three. We have an internal audit that was done in November ninth and sixth of twenty twenty-three. Out of those came some opportunities for improvement. Every year we go through a management review, which follows a document which is issued and requirements that we gotta look at, elements and specific parts of, of our waterwork system to, you know, follow in compliance with the Drinking Water Quality Management Standard. Emergency training exercise that's done annually and that was completed in November sixteenth of twenty twenty-three. All those reports are attached as document providing the background information to our drinking water quality management standard. In terms of the actual changes, there is not a lot of elements which changed. I've noted them when we went through on the list. First one is element number four, it's on page forty of your package, and it was as simple as in that element. We've deletion of Chief Administrative Officer used to be highlighted in there under top, top management. We've moved that position as a recommendation. Coming to have that in there is owner representative, so that shows up in that element. Element number six has changed just because last year we updated our permit to take water for the wells. That occurs every ten years, so we've noted in our documentation that the expiry date is changed on that October thirteenth of twenty twenty-three. Element number nine goes back to organizational structure, similar to what was noted in element number four, where we moved the Chief Administrator Officer from top management into owner representative. That is noted on page twenty-six. Competencies, element number ten, that's noted on page twenty-nine. There was a part in there which we had all the different levels of competencies where different parts of the organizational chart, and there was one known on there that our operators that it's, they have to do annual in-house training. That little extra line, the lecture note was noted in there as part of an opportunity of improvements, we've updated that one. Element number twelve, communications is updated. That just notes out on page sixty-three, and that's actually kind of an internal document which we have on, we're reporting if we got an adverse water quality incident. That's an internal document which is utilized by staff. Element number thirteen, which is essential suppliers and services, noted on page sixty-five. We've got an inventory list, minimum inventory that we keep for both our water treatment inventory and water distribution inventory. So that was a requirement that we have those. Note the minimum levels, that's an internal document that's been updated. Next change is element number sixteen, sampling and testing. What is noted on that is on page sixty-two, we've updated an operating procedure was an internal document for water main report. Water main break report and also the adverse water dequality incident shown on there, it's an internal document. The, another item that changed is element number twenty on, on management review, that's on page sixty-one. And that also reflects changes that we did in terms of top management organizational restructure in our management review. That is a brief summary of the changes that, that we've made. Our link to strategic goal is safe and reliable infrastructure and open and responsible government. And the recommendation is to report PW oh eight twenty-four, drinking water holiday management system, annual update be received. And the council accept the external audit, internal audit, management review and emergent training exercise completed in twenty twenty-three. And the council approves and forces the updated operational plan. What we're seeing here is a plan. The last time we updated, it shows on the first page, it was endorsed by council of April twenty-fifth, twenty-three. That's gonna be changed to be saying April second of twenty twenty-four. And each of the pages that has changed has been highlighted, updated in the revision box, so it's bringing the information forward to council to get it updated on an annual basis. If there would be any questions, I would try and brief through the pages to find the answer.
That was good. Thanks, Ron. Any comments or questions, Counselor Fleet?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Ron, for your report. This is on page forty-eight. Approximately sixty kilometers of piping has to be maintained, and you know, to me, that's a lot of piping that, you know, it's good for the public to realize how much maintenance there is to this, this type of piping. The water tower, the one built on Fourteenth Street, it has seven hundred and forty thousand gallons. And the one in fifty-seven has two hundred and eight thousand gallons. Do you have any idea how many gallons our new water tower will hold?
The new water tower, the projection on that is to have the new one which replaces the Seventh Avenue to be similar size of what Fourteenth Street is. So it's gonna provide us with significant increased capacity.
Well, that's good to know because, you know, with, you know, when we had our major fire in Main Street, and it's nice to come to realize that we're gonna have more capacity when, if disaster like that ever happens again. So thanks very much for your report.
Counselor Cable?
I think you worship, and thank you very much, Ron, for the report. I always appreciate all the documentation that you provide, and I think that the audit in particular is really interesting just to see the, the feedback, the feedback. And I appreciate the way that you were able to incorporate that into the, into the changes. I also like to including the information about that training exercise that staff did, because there were some interesting scenarios there and certainly things to, to think about. Just wondering if you could clarify, what, what would you consider to be the main difference between top management and the owner representative? I know that that was kind of a, a larger change in that report as the C A O is moving to be the owner rep. What are the advantages of that model?
Well, I think it kind of distinguishes what's been involved. I'm still on there as top management because I'm involved a little bit in the day-to-day operations, dealing directly with the supervisors to look after, after the operation, so it kind of moves the C A O to be more in the owner part of it and more at the level that's involved in terms of council.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, Counselor Hudson?
Thank you, worship. I just want to commend you, Ron, on so many pages of information and how, how you gave us the cold snows. That was fabulous. And also that without all of this, I for one have a better appreciation of every time I turn my tap on, and I truly wish that everyone in town would think the same way, because it is a lot of work for you and your staff to be able to provide the town with the water that we have. So thank you.
I don't see any other, and I just want to say, Ron, I'm glad to see that training and the testing. Because if we know one thing, we do not want to have an emergency, but we do want to have some practice if it ever does happen. So that's good to see. So I'll call the question all in favor of PW zero eight twenty-four. That is carried. Item nine is correspondence requiring action, and we have nine point one, which is correspondence from Wayne Burrow, who is the moderator for London Transplant Gift of Life Association. He's also an advocate for Trillium Gift of Life Network. So he is asking that the council of the town of Hannover proclaim April twenty twenty-four as organ and tissue donation awareness month, and that the Be a Donor flag be flown at the Civic Center from April twenty-first to the twenty-seventh. And we've been doing this for quite a few years now, so. Comments or questions, or a mover and seconder, and we'll Counselor Cable and Deputy Mayor Dickert. All in favor that we proclaim April twenty twenty-four and raise the flag for the last week? That's carried. And just a reminder that if you are a donor, no longer does it work just with a card. You need to register online at beadonor.ca. Remember how we used to fill out the back of your license? All right, item ten is reports and correspondence for information. Ten point one is report D C S zero five twenty-four. The subject is the twenty twenty-three council remuneration and expenses. It's from Chris Walker, Director of Corporate Services and Treasurer. Chris?
Thank you, your worship. This is an annual requirement of the municipal act that we have to provide council. An itemized statement of remuneration expenses paid in the previous year to each member of the council and any particular board or local board that has a stipend. And the remuneration expenses paid shall also be reported for each person other than a member of council, pointed to such members such as Police Service Board, Library Board, et cetera. The two thousand and twenty-three statement of remuneration expenses is attached, and the link to strategic plan is open and responsible government. You will note that the town paid about a hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred dollars for the remuneration for council members, including per diems and travel and convention. The other is a combination of board from the Police Services Board for Counselor Hawking and Mayor Sue, and Mayor Sue also has Songine Valley as well as West area Board of Directors on that, if you were wondering what those differences are. And the only board that we actually pay any stipends to for now is Police Services Board, and there's a listing there as well. Again, this is just for information. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. I don't see any hands. We'll move on. Item ten point two is report P R C zero five twenty-four. It's from Laura Kristen, our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, and the subject is Earth Day twenty twenty-four. Laura?
Thank you, your worship. So Earth Day is celebrated worldwide annually on April the twenty-second. And in response to a notice of motion from council, the town of Hannover has been celebrating and recognizing Earth Day since twenty twenty-two. Our goal is to raise awareness, promoting environmental sustainability. And the events that we have proposed for twenty twenty-four, we'll, we'll certainly do just that. So the following events are, are proposed on Saturday, April the twentieth. We are looking to repeat our very popular community-wide garage sale. So on April the twentieth, rain or shine, we will be hosting residents the opportunity to participate in our garage sale. So in order to do that, residents must complete an application form by nine A M. on Thursday, April the eighteenth. And we will then take all of those locations and addresses and compile them onto a map for people to go around from garage sale to garage sale to garage sale. Also, as part of our, our twenty twenty-four activities, we are also partnering with the library. The first thing is, is you've heard about their seed library, which is very, very applicable for Earth Day. And as part of the program for Earth Day, you can take up, take home up to five types of seeds to plant in your own garden. And in support of Earth Day, you can, and if you collect your seeds on April twentieth or twenty-second, you will also be, be provided with starter pots as well as soil to help your seeds get you started on that planting journey. Carrying on with the different events, we also have our mayor's tidy town challenge. So this is for groups, individuals, schools, businesses, neighborhoods that want to team up and to tackle some litter in, in our various parks and green spaces. So we encourage if there are any teams that would like to participate, to reach out to us. You can see our website or give us a call at the Parks and Rec Department, and teams will be provided with a complimentary cleanup kit that includes gloves and garbage bags as well as bag tags to dispose of that garbage. We will also be hosting a targeted litter pickup, and that is on Sunday, April the twenty-first. And that also will be targeting litter around the, the community. And we are asking any volunteers that are wanting to participate to meet at the P and H Center for one P M. this year. And at that point, we will be assigning locations, and volunteers can expect to do about an hour, an hour and a half of volunteer time with that. And we also have refreshments that will be provided from our sponsor, Hallman Motors. So we certainly encourage anyone to get out and participate, help make our, our town a little happier, a little healthier place to live. On Earth Day itself, which is on the twenty-second, we do have a zero waste challenge, so we invite residents to try and reduce your footprint by embracing those principles of reduce, reuse and recycle. Sometimes Earth Day is all about making those small, but impactful changes. Turning off the water, avoiding single-use plastics, reusable water bottles, all can make a difference. So we ask you to join in on that challenge and be part of that solution. We also will be having a recycled art contest for students. And students are challenged to create an art piece using only recycled items, and this will be part of an online contest. And our prize for that contest is also has been donated from Hallman Motors. The last one is part of our partnership with the library is the Clean and Green Foraging for Beginners Workshop. So at the Hannover Public Library, you can discover how to harness the power of Mother Nature and make the most of her offerings. On Monday, April twenty-second at six thirty, Jess Marin from Bohemian Farms will be very, will be providing her insight on the do's and don'ts of foraging, as well as providing guidance on basic plant identification, and the cost for that event is two dollars. And be sure to register for that at the library. The financial implications for twenty twenty-four, we have approximately fifty bag tags that will be allocated for this initiative that will be covered through the Public Works Department. And as well as staff time and any incidental expenses that we have from this program will be covered through P R C of the library budgets, event prizes and supplies. That we have from this program will be covered through P R C of the library budgets, event prizes and supplies. Such as garbage bags, gloves, seed pots, and the volunteer appreciations again from our generous sponsor, Hallman Motors. The link to the strategic plan is goal two, healthy and welcoming community. And the recommendation before you this evening is that report P R C zero five dash two four Earth Day twenty twenty four be received for council's information.
Thanks, Laura. Comments, questions, Counselor Sakal?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Laura. There's a lot of exciting things going on this year, and I want to start by giving a shout out to Hallman Motors because weren't they the sponsor last year as well? So that's wonderful. I like a lot of the things that I see on that list, but I'm really curious, especially with the. Mayor's Tidy Town Challenge. There are a lot of groups you can target here with, you know, the schools. But the service clubs could be doing something, the dance troops we have in Hannover could be doing something. How are you getting this out to all of those groups?
For your worship. So all of our marketing efforts will actually begin as of tomorrow. And you're absolutely right. There's kind of two opportunities here, and we set this up strategically. So just in case, let's say you're busy on that day that we have our targeted litter pickup where you can immediately meet at the P and H Center. Or maybe it's a business that only works Monday to Friday. So participating in that. The Tidy Town Challenge can be done anytime during that week leading up to Earth Day. And so it provides just that, an additional opportunity should one P M on the twenty first not work for certain groups or individuals even.
Other comments or questions, Counselor Fleet? Is the challenge?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Laura. You know, this is a great time for our community weekend cleanup, tidy up our town. It's great. It's a lot of fun. I think this is our third year, if I, you know, memories correct. And, you know, I always challenge, it was Counselor Dickert, now it's Deputy Mayor Dickert to the challenge, and. He picked up a couple of new counselors last year, and he was a little bit, ah, you know, they didn't really do, you know, their. Best that they could. I'm going to offer the two new counselors opportunity to come to team fleet. But anyways, Counselor Cable and myself, we've been cleaning up the last two years. So we're going to challenge. Counselor or Deputy Mayor Dickert again to the challenge and. Counselor Cable and Fleet Team has picked up Hannover Fire and Rescue this year, so we're looking forward to the challenge, so.
Are there any incentives to go to your team or what?
It's just bragging rights.
Very good. Deputy Mayor?
Well, as much as it pains me to do this, I need to concede for the Sunday because I will be on the way to, on my road to Ontario Good Roads. So we'll have to either pick another date, as Laura has said, you know, maybe we have to move this and. Just have our head to head on the Saturday or something like that and see if we can come up. Yeah, yeah. I sense you knew this in advance and you've set me up.
Okay, very good. So we're. We've got it worked out, what day we can be there and help out and clean up and make the town look good. So. Thanks, Laura. All right, ten point three is the library board meeting minutes. Counselor Hudson?
Thank you, your worship. Then these minutes are from February the twenty first. And a couple of points to make here, the. One of the big discussions of that particular meeting was the fact that the Zoom court was discussed with so many of the. Charges that are held with the courts. A lot of the cases are held by Zoom, so they don't have to transport people from one. Location to this area for their actual court case. So the library was asked if they would be able to host that, and so a lot of discussion went around that as far as to where and. Concerns about liability and accompanied individuals, et cetera. So. The end result for that was that it was taken off the table for the library to do, and the police services will be. Looking after that again. We just didn't really have the facility to be able to do that. And there were some safety and insurance concerns with that as well. So that was a huge part of our meeting. We did a communication workshop on March the ninth, just amongst the library board to. Have a better understanding of how people present themselves, present their ideas and how to. Better facilitate meetings, et cetera. So that was, that was very interesting to see all the different. Personality traits of people that are part of the board, and I think it, I think it will go a long way in making things a lot easier. We also are doing a staff appreciation event in, actually this month, at the end of this month for the staff. So that it's a little easier for them to know who the board is as well as all the members of the library. There's a lot of times that they don't all work together and. The library staff obviously don't know us very well. So we're hoping to have an in-person staff event, staff appreciation event. There'll be a more cohesive group in working with fundraising and having to work with the staff and the board at the same time. So that is a positive. Issue as well. A couple of the fundraising things that I'll mention as well. We had a, in February, we had a Love Your Library event, which. Not sure if it was not great timing, but not the most positive, but we are doing a trivia night. In June, so save the date on Friday, June the twenty first for a trivia night at the Hannover Legion. We are partnering with them. And hope to make that a quite a large event as a fundraising event as well. And I'll just make note of a couple of things that are happening currently as well. On the last Saturday of the month, from one thirty till three, starting at the end of April on the twenty seventh. They're providing English as a Second Language Social Circle for some of the newcomers to the area. Put on by people from Gray Bruce Newcomer Immigrant Women Collective. And as well as a consultant with employment options. And it'll be just a matter of English as a Second Language themes as ordering food, et cetera. So that's a. A new thing that the library is doing, and. Laura also mentioned the seed library, and I just want to make note that it is a free service. You don't have to be a library member to utilize the five packets of seeds. And as of March the twenty sixth, they have handed out seven hundred and seventy two packages of seeds since the beginning of February. So that's going a long way to. Maybe for food insecurity, et cetera. And as Laura mentioned, they are partnering with Parks and Rec. And they've also partnered with Launchpad to make a cooking show showcasing how. The seeds they planted went to plants that they then made a cooking show for food. And so that's been very well received. It's quite fun to watch if you get a chance to do that. So hopefully with some of these things, and the other thing that has been very popular is the. The program they've put together called Stitch and Sip, which is. A number of people learning how to do the art of crocheting, knitting and fiber arts. This is something that. Probably hasn't been around in quite some time, and they did, they had thirty four attendees for their first one. And it was many intergenerational conversations, so all ages, all skills. And so, you know, hopefully. That's showcasing a return for patience with the seeds, magic of growth. And, you know, maybe a resurgence of some of the simpler activities instead of everything having to be all organized and planned. So lots of new programs happening at the library.
Thank you. I don't see any hands. We'll move on. Item ten point four. Point one is the Soggy Municipal Airport, and along with it is a letter following it. Counselor Hawking?
Thank you, your worship. Excuse me. You will notice the approval of the agenda. We changed things around a bit. But basically, I'm going to just summarize for you. We had two delegations. The first was Steve Furness, who is the Senior Economic Development Officer for Gray County. Included a presentation with Luigi Presta, who's the manager partner of Compass. And this is our third visioning, and the presentation was attended by other municipal counselors. Members of the public. Pilots, and it was really, really well received. Keith MacArthur, who is. Works with. Tim Oles, our new airport manager. Is working with friends of our airport, and please mark this date down on your calendar. We are planning in concert with the Soggy Municipal Airport. We are holding a first responders day on June the eighth. Twenty twenty four from nine to three. To celebrate the services provided. By our first responders and provide the public with opportunities to see more about these services. So we're inviting the MPs, the M P Ps, the county wardens, mayors and counselors. And the event will be public promoted. We hope to have radio, television, and. Our local first responders have responded positively and will be showing up for that day. Pilots meeting. In an effort to restore good communications between pilots and the commission. We hold periodic meetings as really a time to get together, and these have been very, very well received. And I just commented about that on the seventeenth of January. Friends of the Airport, which is another name for Copa fifty four, sent a letter to Mayor Peabody. Asking for him to explain Brockton's position on the airport. They did not receive a response, so I told them to attend on. April the seventeenth, and maybe they'll hear a response at that meeting that. From Brockton, as we all will. Confirmation of West Gray's contribution. Again, the same thing happened to our budget as last year. Hannover and West Gray approved budget increase. I believe it was five percent this for twenty twenty four. Again, Brockton reined. And because of the funding arrangement. The monies had to be returned to the town of Hannover and to the town of, or the municipality of West Gray. So currently we are operating on a twenty twenty two budget. And then we went into closed session. And attached, do you want me to carry on? Okay, thanks. Attached is. A letter from R J Taylor. Most of you, I think in our previous term, we toured the Cedar Crest Trout Farms just located. Outside of Allen Park. Well, R J has taken upon himself to become a certified pilot. And he heard about the the kerfuffle over the Soggy Municipal Airport. And wrote a letter expressing. He's just one of many on the value of this airport from an economic development. And the potential it offers, and he's documented for you. Because I had this letter circulated to all counselors so that everyone was duly informed. Of his position on the future of the Soggy Municipal Airport. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Counselor Hawking. Any comments or questions? No? Okay, very good. Item. Let me see, item. Ten point five is the Drinking Water Source Protection Meeting Minutes from November. Twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. We highlighted these in our December council meeting, so. We had draft minutes at that time. These are final minutes. They only meet quarterly, so the minutes are always late. Later than our normal how we receive minutes. We are still going to be receiving them in draft form, which I would prefer. Because I would rather highlight current information than older information. I will just say that. The Drinking Water Source Protection Committee is working on proposed. New or replacement wells in Ripley, Minto Pines, Chesley and Teeswater. But we will hear more about that. Item ten point six is the Gray County Council and Committee of the Whole highlights. And I'll ask Deputy Mayor Dickert to highlight those, please.
Thank you, your worship. Going through the list there, Dr. Era gave us highlights of the Gray Bruce Public Health Meeting. The unit is looking at voluntary mergers with a neighboring unit, and he did stress that that is a voluntary operation. Reported that to date there have been no measles cases in Gray Bruce, which is good news. The health unit approved their budget with a one percent increase from municipalities and the province. County then went on to, the county council then went on and passed the twenty twenty four tax bylaw, tax policy bylaw. We had an interesting presentation from Illeg Graham and Gia Kukrija. On welcoming immigrants. They have completed a study on what attracts, keeps or has immigrants coming and going from our area. When asked what was the best thing that we as the public could do to make people feel welcome. They simply said to smile and say hello is likely the best thing that we can do. They've also published a book called Penciling It In, and it is, it's actually a very easy read, and it's. It is stories from people who have come and settled in the area and some of the challenges that they faced, and. I know Mayor Patterson and I both got copies of this book at the presentation. I certainly, we'd both be willing to share it if anybody wants to read through it. But it is, it's quite interesting and educational to hear what these people have. The experiences they've had when they move into the area. Supportive Outreach Services, known as S O S, has a new meeting place in Owen Sound. This is the program that also works here in Hannover, and it's made up of frontline support services from Gray County. That forms an outreach service for vulnerable people. It's a team of social workers and healthcare providers that offer biweekly clinics for vulnerable people suffering from mental health and substance use issues. Outreach services include health and medical care, peer support, mental health and addiction support. Armed reduction, education and supplies, housing and shelter system navigation, vaccination, clothing, food and more. And I think it's every other Wednesday they're here in the Soggy Room, so it is certainly supporting our areas very well. We discussed a letter from Greater Sudbury Area. We're asking for support of an appeal where they, courts have found that the. The city was considered the employer and responsible under the Occupational Health and Safety Act for a contract for any contractor they hired. And as such, the city is being sued and held liable for a workplace incident. So. The county agreed to support that request. We approved tenders for several road projects, which were pulverized and paved projects for the most part. But it did include the roundabout at Gray Road three and four just to the east of Hannover here. That is a two point eight million dollar project. It is expected to start by early May. The plan is to keep Gray Road four open with alternating lane closures, but Gray Road three will be closed through for part of that project, so. It also includes a one point one kilometer section of pulverizing and paving east and west of that intersection. So there will be lots of activity out there this summer. We approved moving ahead with ambulance purchases with the new units between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. There will be a total of twenty two. Units in the area by twenty twenty six, and that is an increase of seven from the current fifteen that are in place. It takes up to two years to receive a new ambulance. The province only has one approved supplier, so there is really no competitive pricing. The cost for a fully equipped ambulance is almost three hundred thousand dollars, but they are. Reusing some equipment, the power lifts and things like that out of the existing units, so. They've managed to get the replacement ones at least down to around the two hundred and fifty thousand price, but they are expensive and much needed. The Gray County Paramedic Services also gave us an update on their annual report. They responded to over fifteen thousand calls in twenty twenty three, so it's a really busy service. That actually works out to about forty calls a day that they're responding to across Gray County. Ambulance response times were also shared, and happy to say they met or exceeded provincial requirements. We talked about an issue with A T Vs using the Glennell Klondike County Forest with causing. Damage to the trail system there, so they're going to be trying to do some education and signage and efforts to curtail that challenge. We discussed an opportunity for longstanding leased lands with Midwest Co-op in Dundalk. And then council members took part in a closed session on land acknowledgement statements and how to best. Present them. And that is my report. If there's any questions, I'd be pleased to. And that is my report. If there's any questions, I'll be pleased to try and answer.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councillor Hudson?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just wondering, Deputy Mayor, if you could repeat the traffic circle? The timeframe, that information, I was, didn't see it in the report here. So could you?
It's expected to start in early May, and I believe it's completed by mid-October.
Thank you. And one other question about the SOS program? It's a by-contract program, I believe. Do we know how long that contract runs for for this particular time?
I don't believe it's a contract, it's actually staff from Gray County.
It's always now, okay. Because I think at one time it was just a contract to a certain timeframe. No, they had funding only for so long? No, okay, my mistake, apologies.
Councillor Fleet?
Thank you, your worship. Deputy Mayor Dickert, with the increase of seven new ambulances, I guess, so there would be a need for more paramedics. Is that going to be an issue, finding more paramedics with seven new ambulances on the road?
I think staffing is always an issue. They haven't really indicated, Mr. Webler, when he was giving the presentation, didn't indicate that was one of his main challenges right now. They've been pretty successful, actually. Staff retention hasn't been too bad at Gray County, they've actually been doing pretty well even in the long-term care facilities. So that wasn't something he brought up. So I'm going to, I'm not going to, I shouldn't use that word as soon, because I heard that earlier, but I'm going to assume he's not seeing that as a challenge right now.
Good, that's great, thank you.
I will add, there is the new ambulance bay being built in Durham. And actually, by twenty twenty-six, they do plan on Heavenline Stationed in Aitken as well, so this area is becoming, it is certainly being well-served now. You can tell by the response times in the report that he gave on that, but they're staying on top of it, and we should be well-served well into the future.
You always get the ambulance questions, that's good. Any other comments or questions? There's always lots going on at county, so, which is good. All right, item ten point seven, this is media release from the Soggin Valley Conservation Authority. It says, with support from the RBC Foundation, through RBC Tech for Nature, Soggin Valley Conservation has acquired a data visualization tool. So for decades, the conservation has been dedicated to collecting data on surface water, precipitation and snow at dozens of locations throughout the watershed. So that is now on their site, a visual tool that you can go on and put your community in and look at it and see how much snow came in the last how many years, I don't know what year they started collecting. Some are started in the eighties, some started in the sixties, and I think that'll be very beneficial to people who are building in flood, I shouldn't say, they're not building in flood plains, but they're building in the area and also for development. So it is online, if you want to take a look at it, just go to the conservation website, and you can play around with it and see what you can find out. Item ten point eight is correspondence from the Minister for Seniors and Accessibility. Last meeting, Vicky McDonald, our clerk, also mentioned this. They are advising us about the opportunity to submit a nomination to recognize a senior in our community. And the deadline is April thirtieth. And just a note to say that it's important that we take time to celebrate our seniors, our, I shouldn't say that, our older population. We get all these new buzzwords that, you know, we got to keep up with, older population, me included. So, all right, so that brings us to item eleven, planning and other meetings. These meetings, the dates are listed on this agenda and on our website, and there is one change, eleven point six. The Hanover Police Services Board will not be meeting in April, their next meeting is May twenty-first. Item twelve, dates to remember and announcements. The next regular council meeting is April fifteenth at four PM. The next committee of the whole meeting is May the sixth at four PM. And at this time, I will ask if there's any notice of motion. Okay, we do have a closed meeting, so it is recommended that the council of the town of Hanover meet in closed session in order to address the following matters. An item being considered that is, that is a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed, could reasonably be expected to prejudice significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons or organization pertaining to a possible development. Also pertaining to litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the municipality or local board involving a corporate agreement and proposed or pending acquisitions or dispositions of land by the municipality or local board. So I need a mover and seconder to go into closed. Councillor Hawking and Deputy Mayor Dickert. All in favor? That is carried. So we'll take a five or, do you want ten minutes? Break. I'm here in ten. We'll take ten minutes, we'll be back at five thirty-six, five, five forty-five, nine, nine minutes. Five forty-five.
And I declare we only discussed the items that were listed on the closed meeting agenda. Three reports were received for information and direction was given to staff. We also received a verbal report along with discussion to provide input to staff. We do have one motion from the closed meeting session. And that is that the town, the council of the town of Hannover endorse the minutes of settlement with respect to OPA eleven. And that the mayor and CAO be hereby authorized to execute the minutes of settlement as outlined in closed session in report CAO zero four two four regarding OPA eleven. And I need a mover and seconder for that motion. Councilor Hawking and Deputy Mayor Dickert is all in favor. That is carried. One final motion and that is to adjourn at seven twenty five. Moved by Councilor Hudson, seconded by Councilor Sackel, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you.